Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, July 15th, 2021. Six o'clock PM remote meeting of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. If you are just tuning in and you want to access this meeting, please by phone call 1-646-749-3112. You can enter the access code 944-571-349. Or by computer, going to globalgotomeeting.com and then join 944-571-349. So before I begin this evening, I have to read my script. So please bear with me for a moment. I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. As a preliminary matter, this is Bob Tinkler. I am the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. In an effort to reduce background noise, I am going to ask that all of you please mute your phones at this time and only unmute if you're going to speak. Also, if you have televisions, we've had some issues with pet barking or any other phones that might be on the side in your house or wherever you are located, if you can kind of control those as well while we're getting started. So first of all, permit me to confirm that all the members in person are anticipating only a general present. When I call your name, if you could please respond. Vice Chair Michael Maron.
Right here, Bob.
Welcome, sir. Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Tussi, who received the email about two hours ago, will not be joining us this evening. Ms. Roach, are you present? All right, so we don't have Ms. Roach yet. Mr. Jones, are you present? And Ms. Bush.
Bob, Megan is on the line. She just signed in.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again, please, sir?
Sir, Megan Roach is on the line.
Oh, good. Okay. Megan Roach, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Bob.
Excellent. Thank you. We had Mr. Jones, correct? Could you please respond again, sir? All right, we don't have Mr. Jones yet, then I thought. Did we have him? No. Ms. Bush, are you here? Okay, so we'll deal with that in a minute. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Thank you. CDIS Building Clerk Katrina Smalls. Thank you. Are there any other members of town officials or employees present that I am not aware of? You would like to introduce yourself?
Not just us.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So good evening. The opening meeting of the Town of Auburn zoning board of appeals is a Thursday, July 15th, 2021, now called the order. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order to suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, to which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as a reasonable public access is afforded, that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals is convened by remote participation for the public only. Although some staff may be physically located in the selectance meeting room at the town hall, those employees are practicing so to designate in accordance with the governor's orders. And I know that I stated it at the beginning of the meeting, but if you are just joining us or you are interested in joining us for public access, please call by telephone 1-646-749-3112 and enter access code 944-571-349. You can join via your computer by going to gotomeeting.com and then join meeting 944-571-349. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Corporation. Under those, accordingly, those members of the zoning board of appeals, employees, and members of the public, if you might cooperate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you may broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. So we are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but we do so for maybe to cover some ground rules for effectively clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes of the meeting. I will introduce, I myself, Robert K. Drell, and to speak on the agenda after they conclude the remarks. The chair will go down the line of any member and invite each five minutes to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public commenters followers. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak, identify their names and addresses. Once the chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call each by name in three minutes for any comments. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. If we have any technical difficulties, we will suspend the meeting while attempts to repair or resolve are made and then we will keep accurate minutes, noting any disconnections and reconnections of the meeting. Okay, so that was my first necessary paperwork. Hang on one second. Okay. So just we have some, please bear with me if you want to walk this evening. We have a couple of administrative responsibilities to take care of first. So for the record, Tussi will not be with us this evening. So we'll be moving. Mr. Jones, are you present? I'm not hearing Mr. Jones. Ms., are you present?
I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so we have technically myself, Mr. Maron, Mr. Chacolo, and Ms. Roach. Who are forward as a voting member this evening? Also, before we begin, we have to reorganize this evening with notified earlier in the week to the town hall. It is on the agenda as being later in the meeting, but traditionally, we have some members of the meeting to make sure everything is organized. So with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to begin the reorganization process?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion as stated.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Thank you very much, Mr. Chacolo. So again, because we are still required for roll call votes, I will stop talking for a minute out. Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir? Thank you. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you, and I vote to approve. With that being said, do I have any motions for chairman this evening?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I would make a motion to continue with Bob K. Drell with the Auburn zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Maron. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have any other members of the board who would like to suggest someone else for chair? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I will go to a roll call vote. Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve. The motion is stated.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir? Thank you. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve the motion.
Thank you. And Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your continued patience with me anyway, so I appreciate that. So we have chairman. I will move on to vice chair. Do I have any motions for vice chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate the current vice chair, Michael Maron.
Thank you very much, sir, and I will second the nomination of Vice Chair Michael Maron. So we have a first and we have a motion and a second. Do I have anyone else for vice chair? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We'll close the recommendations for vice chairman and I would like to do a roll call vote. Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir? Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve the motion.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I also approve. Congratulations, Vice Chair Maron. Thank you very much for your continued service, as well as all the members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to offer my appreciation for all of board members and your support.
So we will move on now to our first hearing. The first hearing, the PM applicant ID sign group incorporated requesting a special permit under section 7.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to install a 30-foot square foot secondary sign probably located at 368 South Street, Auburn, M.A., M.A. 33, parcel 81. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. As a roll call requirement, Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve the meeting. Six o'clock PM hearing is now open to the applicants. I can see you waving, but you need to unmute if you could, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes, sir. So we're interested in learning a little bit about what you have going on. Please also, members, keep in mind the inclusion from 6:17:21. So, sir, if you could introduce yourself and give us an overview of your time of conference, please.
Yeah, absolutely, of course. My name is Jamie Fisher. I'm with ID Sign Group located in Easton, Massachusetts, and our client Shaw's is requesting that we install a 42-inch Rondell internally illuminated capsule with the verbiage stating "drive up and go." The "drive up and go" is an acrylic black dimensional letter on a standoff flush mount to the building's facade. And the capsule, as mentioned, is illuminated internally with LEDs, a steady white light, which will illuminate through a translucent red vinyl graphic to depict a vehicle. The purpose of this sign is to protect the public's interest through the promotion of a contactless grocery shopping experience in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's something that a lot of these grocery stores have begun to implement as a service that they offer, whereas patron shopping in the store can place their order ahead of time, calling their order, and then when they arrive, they park in a specially designated parking stall where a store associate will then bring out their groceries. Therefore, in turn, they no longer need to actually physically step foot inside of the store. So this helps to promote the business, this system that they're really implementing.
Okay. Before I turn it over to the board members, do I have any other clutter or members of the public have concerns? Here, it's easy for the hearing. If so, could you please identify a question? All right, I'll leave a countdown of five, four, three, two, one. I do not hear or see anyone, so we'll go ahead and go to Vice Chair Maron. Sir, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is our file this applicant coming forward was on the agenda last meeting and did not attend for some reason? So I haven't received any additional paperwork on this application other than what was originally submitted. And what was originally submitted was a 35 and a third square foot secondary wall sign. Are those dimensions still accurate?
Yes, and actually, if I can elaborate on as to why I did not attend the last meeting.
I'm not asking you to, I appreciate you for here. I wasn't, please don't feel as though you need to defend it.
Okay, no defense required. However, the agenda that I was given had stated that this was going to be attended through a virtual Zoom meeting. When I logged into that platform using the unique access code, no one was available. Later come to find out that the agenda was changed after the fact. We were never notified about it. We had gone back and forth, Ginger and I, and she was able to luckily get us on this next hearing. So thank you, Ginger, for helping to bring us through this system.
Now, perfectly understandable. Thank you for those comments, but I don't want you to feel as though a defense is necessary. We very much appreciate you being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
So the dimensions, sir, is that accurate? Thirty-five and a third square feet is what's being proposed?
Yes, sir. Thirty-five point three six square feet. Yep, you got it.
All right, so we don't have an brief. I do appreciate that you explained what the sign would appear to be, but we don't have an brief, any photos or schematic on the plan currently, or unless I'm missing something and they were submitted after.
So the initial submission, the submittal that you were referring to, where you determined the square footage, what are you basing that off, sir? Because I would imagine that, yep, there you go. That's the rendering. That's the conceptual rendering. Now, we submit the procurement of our application.
Okay, so I didn't receive that in my brief, so I appreciate seeing it now. So instead, you're looking at our bylaws for a secondary wall sign speaks to six square feet and you're asking to leave for a 35 and a third square foot sign. We're exactly on the building. I'm familiar with the law. Where exactly in the building are you proposing it be located?
Yeah, of course. So actually, if you take that conceptual rendering and you zoom out on it just a little bit, I'm not quite sure who's controlling the screen right now.
Just give me a moment.
Yep, there you go. You can see in the bottom right-hand photo, virtual elevation approximate scale, that's conceptual rendering where our client has suggested that we install this Rondell and dimensional letter set.
And is there a way that you can load that up for free? That bottom right photo. Thank you, sir. Okay, I see. If that's fine. I don't want to give you anyone vertigo. So it's that signage, you write a circle and it's that signage to the far right that follows to the weight of the shaw?
Correct. Yes, sir. The Rondell is internally illuminated. The dimensional letters are not. So only the red circle will eliminate.
Okay. And is that, what we're looking at, if I may, is that pretty much the scale as far as the way it looks right now?
Absolutely. It's a disclaimer that we say approximate scale, but that's damn close. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much for answering my question, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reserve any further questions after the board discusses, but thank you for the time.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Chacolo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to hold off any comments. I'm still filed safe.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
No, I do not have any questions, Mr. Maron. I have one thing I was wondering about. I'm all set.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so the only question I actually have is I know that we are here discussing the sign placement and size. I think that's that. But has consideration been given for where parking spaces will be for this particular activity?
Yes, sir. They're located just to the left of where the sign will hopefully be placed in the future.
Okay.
I do have a paper rendering of that. I do not believe it was submitted just because actually locating those parking stalls beyond our company's curbs on our scope work. However, if you like, I can just hold it up and show you guys, if that helps.
No, I know you're just a sign guy. I understand that. I respect that. I just wanted to make sure at some point or another the concept of where those parking spaces would be in relation to ADI compliance and handicap necessity. And I know that's not necessarily yours. The law has been brought up by the applicant and the customer where I'm standing this time.
Okay, right on.
So that's all I really have. Vice Chairman, is there anything else? I don't. I don't want to do this right now. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chacolo, I know you deserve to.
Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I am all set.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I'm all set.
Thank you. And just for the record, I did receive a secondary email a few minutes ago. Mr. Jones did sign for the meeting. They just had a spotty service. He was not able to connect. Well, since he had a quorum, he signed off and he will not be in attendance for the remainder of the meeting this evening. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public commentary hearing?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to close.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Chacolo, do I have a second? Thank you. From the top, Vice Chair Maron.
I approve.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo. Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
I approve. So, Ms. Bush, the meeting is closed. Do I have a motion on the application or the... I have to get my, I'm shuffling paperwork. Be there for a minute. For the six o'clock PM applicant for a Shaw sign to indicate where there are grocery boxes.
Mr. Chairman, before we move to a motion, if I could just make a comment for the board's consideration?
Absolutely.
And so for me, and one, I just want to make an upfront comment that I apologize for taking other questions. But thanks for giving me the opportunity to answer all of, that's all of my questions. Thirty-five foot sign is a far stretch from what our bylaw has. I mean, six feet, thirty-five feet. Is it considerable as far as relief based on our bylaw? Having said that, looking at the rendering, you know, in my view, with consideration, given that they're asking for so much relief for the size of the sign, I do think that the sign fits. If what we're looking at is the scale, it doesn't seem to be obstructive in any way. It seems to fit as well. And so I would just offer that before we make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I do appreciate that. I as well. I mean, looking at the rendering, you know, thirty-five square feet sounds like a large sign, but when you're looking to the Shaw sign, where on the building? And also the fact that, as I'm sure most can do, either another. And although the parking is pretty wide open, it's comfortable. Circumstances like this require a larger sign in order to direct the public and where to park and where to go to keep things up. So I don't think it's an unreasonable act as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's why I think it was so important for us to see a picture, a schematic, and gauge from that. Because just going by the numbers, it seems like it's a big ass, but it does seem to fit its scale. So with all of those comments, if I may, I would make the motion to approve with standard conditions.
Okay, I appreciate that. But a motion to approve, do I have a... Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. So from the top, Vice Chair Maron.
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo. Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
Thank you very much, and I also vote to approve. So you can reach out to the town hall during the next hour. I'm sure they'll be happy to guide you through the rest of the application process and get you moving on to the next step.
Awesome. Thank you so much, guys. Have a great evening. All right, take care. Appreciate it. Bye now.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the six o'clock PM hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, motion to close.
Mr. Chacolo, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve the meeting for the six o'clock PM application vote. Okay, on to the 605. Applicant Auburn Industrial Development Corp. requesting a special permit under 7.7.1. I have somebody talking in the background. I'm sorry. Am I interrupting someone? Okay, I just want to make sure somebody wasn't trying to say something else to you. That's all. Okay, so again, the 605, Auburn Industrial Complex Corp., requesting a special permit under 771 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a M.A. stop construction. Probably located at 44 South Street, Auburn, M.A., M.A. 33, parcel 18. Do I move to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Thank you. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve as the applicant for the 605 presents.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jonathan Finkelstein, an attorney for AIDC. Listening tonight is Mr. Reisner, the principal and day-to-day manager of AIDC, along with Bob Browning from Auburn Graphics.
Great. Thank you very much for attending this evening, sir. I'm going to yield the floor to you. If you can give us a presentation on what you're trying to accomplish and then we'll turn it over to the members of the board.
I gather you're probably all familiar with the industrial park on 44 Short Street. It's owned and leased by AIDC. They have around 330,000 square feet of warehouse amongst 16 building units.
I'm sorry. We have a couple of people talking in the background. If we can try to block them, please. So the gentleman gives you the free space to continue.
Affirmative. They stopped.
Can I continue, sir? Yes, sir. Well, the majority of the tenants are warehouse distribution tenants and it's been around since 1972. The reason we're here tonight is because Auburn has a master sign plan requirement if you have a parcel of land in excess of four acres, which we do. And what brought this delay was the two tenants who've been there approximately a year, each probably at the same time had applied for sign permits to put off wall signs and monitor another smaller sign. That triggered the building inspectors to direct it then to the bylaw. If you have a parcel of land in excess of four acres, you really need to have a master sign plan approved and then all the other signs which are in accordance with the bylaw dimensions get building permits thereafter. And that's why we're here today. Do you have a package there that you might be able to put on the screen that we presented as the master sign plan? There you go. So there are, this is the sign plan. I also entered plans of the two tenants, which I don't know if that was required, but I wanted to show you what they were doing as well. NYC, the company that pre-protected, Bell and Boiler, and Weller was the company that ride truck engines and truck bell. NYNE was looking for four signs and Weller was looking for one. And the building was, we saw these applications. He told us that a master sign was required. So the sign you have in front of you was put together by Bob Browning and Martin Reisner, Bob Browning from Auburn Graphics. And I'd be happy to go through it. You'll see that on the next page, he has nine sign types that you might see in the park. And if you go through sign types, it gives you, as the ordinance requires, it details the material, the nature, size, and so on and so forth that would be used in the event that new signs would be established and constructed at the park. We'll take a look also at the N Y N E signs and Weller signs that we presented as examples of what those are on the park. There you go. I'll give you the line in the following. If we are approved for the, uh, master sign, uh, the, a different companies, two different companies would be installing the sign. So they'll be coming to the building inspector, uh, requesting internal, uh, with the business with the dimensional requirements of the room.
Okay, um, does anyone, do you like to answer before I turn it over to the board?
No, 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 man. Would you have any answer questions? Mr. Reisner's on the line. Mr. Browning's on the line, I hope. I can't see them, but I think they're...
I'm here.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Just before I turn it over to the board, we have no butters present, I'm assuming, this evening? Usually they don't for this particular industrial park. Uh, last call for butters? Okay, hearing unseen none. Uh, Vice Chairman Aaron, do you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, um, I see in the, at the end of the master plan, there's, um, page twelve. Thank you for the moment to get to it. Proceed. There's, there's a drop-in of, of essentially scripted our bylaw, um, based on signage. Um, and so I might have understand that, um, rise in your master plan, um, that you are in agreement, um, with conforming to all of these dimensions, um, with any sign that may be erected?
Yes, we are. You know, as the bylaw is amended, we will, uh, that will be our guideline.
So, so, thank you. And so, uh, for, for further clarity, so you are not, you are not seeking relief from, from any dimensional requirement for any existing or, or future signs at this time, is that correct?
That's correct. Um, the existing signs were done, um, prior to this and, uh, we imagine that they all had their, all individual that might have been prior to your master sign. All the future signs will comply with the dimensional requirements. If some additional relief is added or required at that time, I guess we would then ask for, we'd come back to the board, uh, for additional relief. The, uh, the bylaw takes into account some signs are changed outside the master plan that we would have to come back and amend the plan.
Thank you. Uh, and so, uh, final question, um, in, in your, uh, your application this evening, are you proposing any new signs, um, or is this just the review of the master plan submitted?
Well, to the extent that we're, um, submitting any new, new signs, yes, N Y N E, uh, and Weller are, so you have, I think, copies of maybe five different signs, one for Weller, four for N Y N E. We're not, I, I don't know the requirement for this particular hearing, but we wanted to show you what triggered our need to come before you. And this is an example of what the signs will look like. If there's any, uh, divergence from clause, we would be, uh, altered as soon as they can.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional questions, this is fine.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chacolo?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the applicant, um, Mr. Maron, because that's clearly, uh, an issue I was getting at. So on that basis, I end up...
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Roach?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Bush?
I don't have any questions.
And also I don't either. Mr. Maron, uh, very eloquently and quickly pointed out page twelve, everything is compliant and, uh, it's contained by our master plan, uh, rinse. Um, so with that being said, um, there's no other concern, but I do have a motion to close the hearing.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Oh, sure, go right ahead.
With respect to page twelve, um, I believe Mr. Browning put it in as the example of the current bylaw. It itself does not have to be part of the plan, uh, as the bylaw changes, we will comply with the bylaw.
I appreciate that. Usually though, if the bylaw does happen to change, you grant that in, I don't think you have to, to, uh, make any adjustment sign by.
No, I was talking about going forward. So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be bound by this bylaw. We would be bound by whatever bylaw is expected to be applied.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
To, to the chair, Bob, it's Adam. Um, I just want to pass along one quick comment that Caleb mentioned to me earlier today.
Um, okay.
Just if you're looking to close and approve this tonight, um, I think Caleb's looking for a, um, master sign plan that, that's kind of shows consistently what they're looking to do. Um, I think one of his concerns is if you look at page nine and ten, it shows three very different types of signs. Verizon, Starbucks, and Truck Company on nine and, um, three other very different signs on page ten. I think he's looking for, uh, at least a condition that there's a, you know, a consistent master sign plan that shows what they're looking to do.
Okay, so if I was to refer that back to the applicant if I may, so you can see on the town side, sir, they gave examples of what types of signs would be used. Um, I could see those as well. So, like, page nine, nine type G is referred to. Um, you have reference books, Starbucks, and it struck. Um, so I think, just to be clear, um, the way they're, it looks to me, I'm sure some other members of the board, they just illuminate it differently. So I think the town side's concern is, um, consistency with, of the surrounding buildings and terminals, major signs, um, type, if you will. Is that what we're looking for, town side, sir?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sure I missed the question there.
So, um, Adam, I'm gonna yield the floor if you want to kind of clarify, if you want to, please, sir?
Sure. Um, in, in the master sign plan we're looking at, I was, I spoke to the building commissioner earlier today, I'm filling in for him. Uh, one of the concerns, I think, was, um, you know, kind of consistency. The master plan, uh, sign, the best assigned plan looks good, except there are some concerns with some of the examples and there's, there's no consistency. Um, I noticed tonight, on page nine and ten, there are very different types of signs that are, like, on page nine and page ten. I think we're looking for a master plan sign that is kind of consistent and shows what, um, the industrial park is looking to, to do for signage, um, now and going, going forward. So it's consistent.
So you're looking for, we have a sign law, uh, plan from, uh, the industrial park overall, not just all the park?
Correct. It's a master.
Is that correct?
Correct. Master plan sign for the whole complex.
Okay. Um, I yield the floor to you, sir, the applicant. So I do want to say what happens for the town is, um, their stance is that you're not partly having master signs on file with the town hall. So it may have something beyond, uh, the application is great, it's consistent, uh, it's obviously well done. Um, but if there is an updated master sign plan, the industrial park as a whole.
And that's it, that you're looking for, um, actual, uh, existing signs and dimensions that are there now?
So I think it would be a master sign plan, uh, I'm gonna, you know, I, I know, I think it would be best described by Adam, so I'm gonna give you the description, please, sir?
Sure. I, I can refer the board to, I can refer the board to, uh, Mr. Moody's memo. I believe you all received it. It's a line highlighted yellow. Uh, in accordance with the Auburn zoning bylaw, the applicant shall submit a master sign plan that depicts maximum size locations of all signs prior to the issuance of new sign permits. That's from section seven point seven.
Okay, so we can include that if, if the board does decide to, um, special permit proceeding, we can make that in a condition, is all.
Correct.
Would you, would that, Adam?
Yes, correct.
So I think, um, to the applicant, um, what we're going to do most likely, if the board does happen to approve, will be a condition that an updated master sign plan is submitted to the town as well.
Okay, I think, and, and if I understand that correctly, you want us to identify all the, we have in the park, uh, maybe photographically and dimensionally?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you can work the defense notes exactly what they need afterwards in a subsequent meeting. Uh, you know, that way you can make sure that we find, uh, I, I'd rather get into the exact specifics of what the master sign plan requires. It's pretty complex. I think it would require a lot of time, you know, for you to this evening. If we make it as a condition, then you can work with the building commissioner, uh, and the Department of Services to, uh, submit that along with the applicant.
That's okay with us. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Adam, is that satisfied, town?
Yes, that should be sufficient. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so that we negotiated that, um, is there any other members of the board that have any questions or concerns? Okay, hearing unseen none. Um, I honestly don't remember exactly where I stepped before this moved forward. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask, uh, for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Maron, do you have any questions or concerns?
I don't have any. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions or concerns. I'd be, I'd be happy to present a motion right now.
All right, just want to go around the board to, 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 Mr. Chacolo, any questions or concerns? Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Bush? I'm sorry, Ms. Bush, I didn't hear you. Do you have any concerns with the applicant?
I don't.
Thank you very much. Neither do I. So do I have a motion on, I'm gonna need to find my paperwork again. On the here, on the six oh five PM, Auburn Industrial Development Corp., requesting a special permit under seven, the Auburn zoning bylaw for a master sign plan. I'm probably located at forty-four Short Street, Auburn, MAP, MAP eleven, parcel eighteen. Is there a motion on the request for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I make a motion, um, as stated, for the applicant to approve, um, with standard conditions in addition to, um, the discussed. Um, I believe the word consistency, um, should be part of that secondary motion, um, and what the, uh, the term, um, based on Adam and Caleb, what they would prescribe, um, that the applicant submit in a final master.
Okay, okay, so that's, there's a lot of verbiage there, but, um, is there a, Mr. Maron's motion?
I can second that.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Uh, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Thank you. Ms. Roach, how do you vote, ma'am?
I would approve.
Thank you. Um, and Ms. Bush, what do you vote, ma'am?
I approve.
And I vote to approve as well. So, uh, sir, if you'd like to reach out to the, um, Department of Special Services, I'm sure they can guide you to the proper documentation you need for the master sign plan and then submit it out with your, uh, specific instructions for the particular project.
Very good. We'll be in touch with the, uh, the building department shortly. We'll get the, uh, whatever guidelines they have and then let's...
Thank you very much for helping.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Okay, we'll let them sit up for a minute, and then we have a couple of administrative requirements, and we're doing pretty good tonight. Okay, it looks like most of them have left. So we do have some other, uh, meeting requirements here for other business. Uh, so we have the reorganization of the boards, already been done. We have, um, IT improvements needed. So we did receive a letter and a package. Uh, there are some concerns about the selectmen's rooms at town hall. Uh, are any members of the board expressed any concerns, uh, specifically regarding, I think, technology is really where they're going? Uh, would additional TV screens be helpful for, uh, people in attendance? Do you need plugs where we sit for laptops, uh, or to plug any other type of electronic items in that would aid you in your meeting? Um, anything like that at all? Personally, I do think that one additional screen would probably be helpful. Um, placement, I think, could be open based on what the TV needs to do, uh, to make sure it's visible for people sitting in the gallery and, um, you know, for the folks at home and probably make it easier to see. I'm not sure if any of you agree with that, but...
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll be honest. I'm not sure that I completely followed you.
I'm, I know, I was reading that quickly. So what you have here is they talk about, if you look at number three on the other business, IT improvements in the B L S room. So, just informally, I'm taking a poll, asking if there is any electronic devices that you feel as though might be helpful, um, to our, running the meetings at the town hall. That's why I mentioned that I think a secondary screen would be helpful, um, for people to come and sit in the gallery, um, or even maybe out in the hallway where people, if we occasionally have a crowded meeting where there is overflow.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see any, any hindrance to the way we're conducting the meeting now. But I think that, uh, perhaps a second screen, um, in the, the hallway outside, if we did have overflow. Although I think overflow gets taken into the, uh, planning for, you know, um, but I, I don't, I don't see any, any need for, um, for major changes. That's just me.
And I, yeah, okay, I agree with that too. And, you know, maybe it might be unnecessary to have one. Although maybe one could be put on a, a wheel and a stand, so if they had to move it around, that might be helpful as well. Um, anyone else? No? Okay, hearing unseen none. I'll move on to the next one.
Uh, to the, to the chair, Bob, just, I'll throw in there if you don't mind. If anybody does think of anything after the fact, send us an email, let us, let us know. Um, we're just trying to pull up the game plan in the next few weeks. That, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so, yeah, you heard that. Um, if you have any, any ideas or suggestions, you can go ahead and forward those through email. The next thing would be, um, hybrid meeting. Can we clarify what the hybrid meeting actually means?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll type that if you don't mind. Um, so, going forward, it seems like, um, the game plan is to do what we're calling a hybrid meeting, um, which is both in person and have the option of remote access as well. Um, that's partly why we're talking IT, um, changes, is we're looking to do both, um, at the same time. It's been done, it was done the other day at the board's selectmen's meeting. It's been done pretty regularly, Conservation Commission. Um, so we're looking to have basically allow both to go on at the same time. Um, the selectmen were given a draft of a policy on Monday. They didn't take any action on it. Um, I'm assuming they'll take action on it at their next meeting, which is the first, the second Monday in, in August. Um, so, for example, the planning board's been meeting in person last few weeks. Now we're gonna have the option that people can, as well as the board meeting in person with the applicants. If somebody can't make it to the meeting, they, they can, you know, call in and voice their concerns for a project that way. So that's, that's the hybrid meeting.
Okay, so I appreciate that. Um, do we know, is, is there a timeline? Do they, are they gonna try to do this in the next meeting or two, or is this from now moving forward?
Uh, pretty much now moving forward. Um, right now it's going to go until April, which is, there's the, the governor's, um, new guidance with, with open meeting goes until next April. So at this point, hybrid will be, um, kind of the path forward until then. After that, I'm, I'm kind of hopeful that there'll be whatever changes needed to be made to the open meeting law that, you know, takes into account the way you've been doing things and, you know, modifying it to, you know, the future. So April will be.
Okay. Okay.
April, to make long answer short, April.
Okay, so we know now that we're going to have, uh, we had talked about it actually briefly to last meeting, um, and we had discussed the idea of going back at this time and, and doing the remote because of the extension of the governor's order, so, um, you know, I think that can be a good option for people if they want to go to the town hall, if they want to do it from home, uh, based on what's going on, so, very interesting, and we'll see how that proceeds. Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a quick follow-up question, uh, cool, for Adam, so, um, with, with the combination options, hybrid, in person and, and remote, um, is that the board members as well as participants, or are the board members to be expected to be at the town hall and participants and choose whether or not they're, they're remote?
I, that, that's kind of a, a loaded question, I'm like, uh, I, I think we would like to have the board members here, but, you know, realizing that that may not be the case and that people can still call from home, um, you will have that option to call in from home, a couple of board member, uh, selectmen did that the other night, so you will be able to, um, we'd like to see you in person, but, you know, we understand where things are, um, you can call in also, so you can do both.
Okay, I think I also heard that while this is under discussion, um, and, and while we haven't landed on firm policy, that our meeting is remotely, is that correct?
So, I, I missed the last, last part, you cut out.
The other zoning board of appeals meetings continue remotely, is that correct for now?
Um, I think we're going to have the hybrid, we're going to be doing hybrid, it's, I suppose it's up to, um, individual board members how they want to proceed with that.
Okay, so that, that's our, that's hybrid, okay, thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Absolutely. What are your other comments or concerns about the hybrid meeting? Is everybody clear on that?
Can you go over that again, uh, Mr. Chairman, about, about how the meeting is going forward, will be conducted for whatever period of time?
So, the preference is that, um, I'm sorry, uh, my phone's going off, the preference is that if we could be present at the town hall, that would be preferable, however, if you are not available or cannot make it to the town hall, or if for some reason you still feel uncomfortable, you can remotely participate as well. Is that correct, Adam?
That's correct.
Thank you, okay.
So, the, the, the general, rather than the specific meeting, will take place at the town hall, unless there is a situation, uh, that requires you to be at home, and you can then electronically attend.
Correct.
Adam?
Yep, yep, there's going to be the option to do one or the other.
Was that last comment?
Yeah, the option to do whether remotely or, you, you have the option to either come to the town hall, um, and do your meeting that way, which is always, you know, there's always cable staff or town staff here, or you can call in from your house or wherever, um, and participate that way, so you can do both.
Is that clear enough for you, sir?
It clears it up, although I'm not comfortable, but it clears it up.
Okay, what are you not comfortable with, sir?
Because I, I've been thinking about it this past week, um, I've felt that the meetings in the town hall, um, like they were in the past, is, um, much, much more preferred. And the, I, I would hope that the, bring out the option of, uh, attending electronically would not, it could be, uh, let's say abused, even though I might be the person abusing. I, I think it's much better in person.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, so, Adam, if you want to just record Mr. Chacolo's comments on that, and then you can bring it back to the Department of Special Services, and they can maybe discuss it amongst themselves, because honestly, I don't think that's really, as far as I'm concerned anyway, I could be wrong, but I think it probably is really not necessarily the members of the board to decide this evening, I think we want to make them aware, give them some thought, and then they, uh, it can be brought out on an email or some other method?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we're not, we don't need to, um, decide tonight what's going on, your next meeting isn't until, I guess, nineteen, so we've got some time to, you know, advertise the next meeting.
Right, and that's what I, that's kind of what I was going to, so as long as we get the two-week window period of the, the meeting, next meeting being advertised, we're safe, we can make that decision between now and then.
Correct.
Um, so we have the, oh, so online training, a lot of that, so I, we have to do our, uh, bi-annual ethics training, uh, I did mine today, just so you know, it's not really chain, um, you have to click through most of the slides, watch some twelve to fifteen-second videos, it probably takes anywhere from forty minutes to an hour, um, you only really have to answer, well, you have to answer all the questions, but from, I think it's page seventy-seven to a hundred is where it really applies to the local boards and committees, uh, and most of that, before that, is really for the full-time town employees, uh, but if you could, if you're not sure where the link is, if you go onto the AuburnGuide.com for the town website, and you go to the town clerk's office, you can click onto where it says departments on the side, and then as you work through those links, you'll find where it says municipal training, and once you click into that municipal training area, you'll find the link that will bring you to the Mass Gov webpage, uh, and it's really not that long, like I said, it takes less than an hour, but we are required to do it, so if you can get that done between now and the next meeting, I'm sure they'll all appreciate it. Um, if you're not sure how to find it, I will say, because I, I did not find it right away, so I called the town clerk's office, and a very nice lady on the phone walked me through it until I figured it out, so, if you're not sure how to find it, you can call the town clerk's office during normal business hours, and they will definitely help you. Um, and then otherwise, we have minutes of the meeting, so we have twelve, nineteen, nineteen, and keep in mind, just so you're aware, these were minutes that had been done when we were sort of in between recording secretaries, so that's why they are being caught up again. It's not, these minutes did not exist, and now that they are formally typed into being submitted for approval. So, minutes of the meeting from twelve, nineteen, nineteen, and oh, one, sixteen, twenty, do I have a motion to approve and accept the minutes of the meeting as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maren, make a motion to accept the minutes, uh, as noted?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Maren, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Ms. Chacolo?
Um.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
And I approve, the minutes for nine, nine, twelve, nineteen, nineteen, and oh, one, sixteen, twenty, have been accepted, uh, and then our next meeting is August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, if anybody's going to be out, out of town on vacation, I know we're getting close to school at that point, uh, please make sure you give the town hall adequate notification, um, and with that being said, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, before I make the motion to adjourn, uh, thanks for your thoughtful guidance on the, um, conflict of interest law, just as a note, I, I was also on the list, and I completed mine this week, uh, but we're, we're complete the one that is noted for a municipal town employee, um, and that may be helpful, because there is another, there is another selection, uh, for a different type of employee.
And thank you for pointing that out, that was one of the things where I got lost, so you're a lot correct, if, if you go into the municipal town employee, rather than state or county, I think was the other option, so if you click on that sort of, uh, big link that says municipal, you'll find it traveling through there.
Right.
Okay, so with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to the hearing.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Chacolo. Mr. Maren?
I approve.
Ms. Chacolo?
I approve.
Ms. Roach?
Yep. I approve.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
And I approve as well. Thank you very much, we'll see you all next month.